It is ten o'clock, it's time to call our meeting in order. I'm sorry it's so hot here, but we'll try to get through this fairly quickly. Amy, please call.
Mr. Barker.
Here.
Ms. Blind, present. Mr. Shue.
Present.
Mr. Cost.
Here.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Mr. Labutus.
Here.
Mr. Marmy.
Present.
Mr. Neely.
Here.
Mr. Rapp.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here. Would you like to stand for the invocation and then please remain standing for the place? Mr. Howler?
King is present. Let us pray. Lord, I want to thank you for all the many ways that you've blessed us and blessed this city. I want to specifically thank you for sacrifice of your son as we finish celebrating Easter. That sacrifice was just a tremendous sacrifice and again, thank you for that. I want to lift up our receiving here tonight, you watch over them, that we would make sound decisions for our city. I want to lift up our safety forces to you as well, that you protect them in their work of keeping us safe. Here in the city of Newark and again, just want to thank you for all the many ways that you've blessed us.
As you know, two weeks ago, April is Autism Awareness Week. We have a wonderful school here in Newark. My place to be gives everybody an equal opportunity to come in and be themselves and be in a learning environment. It's a great school. Today, we've got tenth grader Dakota Kedek who's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Well, Dakota.
Thank you, Dakota. Can I get you a Cleveland Brown shirt? All right, next on the agenda is caucus. Do we have anything tonight? Next minutes of April seventh, meeting twenty twenty five, a motion by Mr. Labutus, second by Mr. Howler, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next up appointments, there are none this meeting. Reports of standing committees, finance service, capital permits without objection will be received and filed. Reports from city officials, jail gear, tax administration, income tax revenue reports for the period ending March thirty first, twenty twenty five, Brandon Fox Water Administration yearly report. For the city of North Division of Water, wastewater communication, Lindsey Brighton, twenty twenty five, waterway cleanups law on run Saturday, April twenty sixth. And Raccoon Creek Saturday, May third. Trish Perry, Ohio Can Free Public Health Clinic on April twenty sixth from ten a.m. to twelve p.m. when they release Main Street. Isle Division liquor transfer, liquor application for ops by LLC DBA beverage source. Fifteen fifty one West Church Street, the patio, North Ohio four three oh five five to Prosty Brew. LLC DBA, the beverage source fifteen fifty one West Church Street and patio, North Ohio. Next up is comments from citizens. You got two opportunities. This is your first opportunity. Do we have anybody come speak tonight? Come on up.
Hello, City Council. My name is Shelby Aiden Hawkins. I live at forty five, Washington, New York. I just wanted to come up and remind you all about the news from the COVID-19 event this Saturday. It starts at ten thirty a.m. and ends until two p.m. and all the proceeds are raised through the fifty fifty raffle and everything goes back to our school, the different events that we do. I'll see y'all there.
Thank you. Anybody else?
We're Shelby and Smith, two thirty seven, at Hooky Court. I'd love to say that I appreciate the pro for his last hours standing up for what he believed in in terms of people's rights. Was definitely a statement about what a fabulous person he was and I do appreciate that he came on strongly about what he believed in in terms of people's rights. I also wanted to ask about the bond issues. There was a bond issue on the election and there seems to be a bunch of other ones. I'm sort of confused as to what they're for because they seem to be a little redundant in some cases. And also for the issue of the parking lot, I thought we just built a parking lot. I was supposed to be helping out the parking situation here. So I'm wondering what that's about. Is that permissible? Not allowed to ask?
No. I mean, you can ask, but this is not a question to answer.
So it's not something you want for the people to know?
People would know.
I don't know and I read the paper frequently.
You can talk to one of us after the meeting. Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak at this time? All right, next on the agenda is ordinance on the second reading, twenty five dash twelve.
Ordinance number twenty five dash twelve by Mr. Barker, Mr. Cost, Mr. Neely, Mr. Marmy, Ms. Blind, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Rapp. An ordinance amending physician classification pay range and department authorization tables of the city of Newark Department of Public Service subdivisions of water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant by reclassifying the classifications of water plant electromechanical technician and wastewater electromechanical technician as water electromechanical technician technician operator and wastewater electromechanical technician operator and setting compensation there for her.
Heard the reading of twenty five dash twelve. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Barker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty five dash twelve.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Barker, second by Mr. Labutus. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I now need to also make a motion to amend twenty five dash twelve. We're not changing anything in legislation. Everyone in their packet has a strength authorization table. The original authorization table sent from H R in an apartment line was incorrect. This new one that's in your packets today has been corrected, so I'd like that to be entered of this legislation, replaced, replace the current table that is with this legislation.
Okay, do we have a motion to amend by Mr. Barker? Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Labutus, any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, let's vote on the amendment. Amy, please call a roll.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind, yes. Mr. Shue.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes. Amendment has passed ten zero. Now, let's see if we can roll to adopt twenty five dash.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shue.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes. Twenty five dash twelve passes ten zero. Next up is ordinance on the first reading, twenty five dash thirteen.
Ordinance number twenty five dash thirteen by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Rapp and Ms. Blind. An ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed one million eight hundred and ten thousand dollars economic development revenue bonds or notes, series twenty twenty five, special obligation, non-tax revenues taxable, matters related thereto and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of twenty five thirteen. It is emergency. Do we have a motion?
Mr. President, Mr. Marmy, making motion to adopt ordinance twenty five dash thirteen, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Barker. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy.
Since there was question as far as some of these bonds and I'm assuming it was asked about the election, so I don't know if it was issues that are on the ballot or in these issues, but I will discuss all four of these bonds just to clarify. The first one is a bond in which it's going to be utilized in order to purchase the building across the street. We're going to be collecting revenue from that, so that revenue from the tenants that are over there will is anticipated to pay back that bond as those come due. The next one is dealing with the bridge improvement and making sure we have a project that we found out about that it was an issue and a major thoroughfare on the bridge, so that one kind of popped up on us, but we have to make repairs to that bridge. The next one is the parking lot. It's not, it's actually improving the parking lot for our city employees and changing it so then we can get more capacity in this area for city employees, then it opens up parking for economic development in downtown area. And then the final bond is just consolidating all those into one is what that does. So just so you know kind of what's coming through here as far as those bonds, but the first one is for the special obligation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Amy, please call a roll.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shue.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes. Twenty five thirteen passes ten zero. Next up is twenty five dash fourteen.
Ordinance number twenty five dash fourteen by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Rapp and Ms. Blind. An ordinance to provide for the issuance of not to exceed one million seven hundred thousand dollars of bonds for the purpose of paying a portion of the cost of various road and bridge improvement projects throughout the city, matters related to such bonds and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading twenty five dash fourteen. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Marmy.
Making motion to adopt ordinance twenty five dash fourteen, second. Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Barker. Do we have any discussion? Amy, please call a roll.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shue.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes. Twenty five dash fourteen passes ten nothing. The next one up is twenty five dash fifteen.
Ordinance number twenty five dash fifteen by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Rapp and Ms. Blind. To provide for the issuance of not to exceed five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of bonds for the purpose of paying a portion of the cost of constructing, renovating, improving and equipping a parking lot located near City Hall, including site work and all necessary pertinences thereto, matters related to such bonds and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of twenty five dash fifteen. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Marmy.
Making motion to adopt ordinance twenty five dash fifteen, second. Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Barker. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Howler.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Marmy, for going over these bond issues in detail. I think one area I do have concern with the bond issues is this particular one. I think we have gone to bond for a significant amount of parking improvement specific to the parking garage within side of this building. And given the conversations that are occurring around our budget and some difficulties in terms of making those budgetary needs in the coming years, I guess I have some concern around us allocating additionally to improving parking in a downtown area, especially this particular area, so I will be by no.
Anybody else? Okay, Amy, please call a roll.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shue.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
No.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes. Twenty five fifteen passes nine to one. And the next one is twenty five dash sixteen.
Ordinance number twenty five dash sixteen by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Rapp and Ms. Blind. An ordinance consolidating up to two bond issues of the city of Newark, Ohio, establishing the terms of such consolidated bond issue and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of twenty five dash sixteen. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Marmy.
Making motion to adopt ordinance twenty five dash sixteen, second. Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Barker. Do we have any discussion? Amy, please call a roll.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shue.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes. Twenty five dash sixteen passes ten zero. Next up is resolution on the second reading, twenty five dash fourteen.
Resolution number twenty five dash fourteen by Mr. Hauser, Mr. Neely, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Marmy, Ms. Blind, Mr. Rapp and Mr. Labutus. A resolution directing the director of public service to proceed with the steps necessary to designate Washington Street as Dr. Charles Noble Senior Street.
Heard the reading of twenty five dash fourteen.
Mr. President, making motion to adopt ordinance twenty five dash fourteen, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Hauser to adopt, second by Mr. Barker.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance, our resolution twenty five dash fourteen to change the name as listed here from Dr. Charles Noble Senior Street to Reverend Charles W. Noble Senior.
Second. So we have a amendment to change Dr. Charles Noble Street to Reverend Charles W. Noble Street. Got a motion by Mr. Hauser, second by Mr. Barker. Do we have any discussion?
I just want to clarify, renaming it Reverend Dr. Charles W. Nobles Senior or just Reverend?
Reverend Charles.
Dr. Noble.
Reverend Dr. Charles.
Yeah.
Senior.
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to be voting on the amendments. Amy, please call a roll.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shue.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes. The amendment has passed ten zero. Now we're going to go back to the Amy, please call a roll to adopt twenty five dash fourteen.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shue.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes. Twenty five dash fourteen passes ten zero. Next up is twenty five dash fifteen.
Resolution number twenty five dash fifteen by Mr. Rapp, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Marmy, Ms. Blind, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Neely, Mr. Ryan. A resolution authorizing Newark Development Partners to act as agent for the city of Newark for the sale of certain real property and authorizing the director of public service to enter into memorandum of understanding with Newark Development Partners governing the sale and distribution of proceeds.
Heard the reading twenty five dash fifteen. What is your wish, Mr. President, Mr. Rapp?
Make a motion to adopt twenty five dash fifteen.
Say.
Got a motion by Mr. Rapp, second by Ms. Blind. Do we have any discussion? Amy, please call a roll.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shue.
Yeah.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes. Twenty five dash fifteen passes ten zero. Next up is twenty five dash seventeen.
Resolution number twenty five dash seventeen by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Ms. Blind, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Rapp. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
Heard the reading twenty five dash seventeen. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Make, make a motion to adopt resolution twenty five dash seventeen, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Barker. Do we have any discussion? Amy, please call a roll.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shue.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes. Twenty five dash seventeen passes ten zero. Next up is twenty five dash eighteen.
Resolution number twenty five dash eighteen by Mr. Shue, Mr. Cost, Mr. Neely, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Barker, Ms. Blind, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Rapp. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
Heard the reading twenty five dash eighteen. What is your wish? Mr. President, Mr. Shue, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty five eighteen, second. Got a motion by Mr. Shue, second by Mr. Howler. Do we have any discussion? Amy, please call a roll.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Shue.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes. Twenty five dash eighteen passes ten zero. Next up is resolutions on the first reading, twenty five dash nineteen.
Resolution number twenty five dash nineteen by Mr. Shue, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Rapp and Ms. Blind. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
Twenty five dash nineteen will be held until our next meeting, May the fifth. Next up is twenty five dash twenty.
Resolution number twenty five dash twenty by Mr. Rapp, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Marmy, Ms. Blind. A resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service of the city of Newark, Ohio to apply for, accept and enter into a water supply revolving loan account agreement on behalf of the city of Newark for planning, design and or construction of lead service line replacement project number seven designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
Twenty five dash twenty will be held until our next meeting, May the fifth. Next up is twenty five dash twenty one.
Resolution number twenty five dash twenty one by Mr. Rapp, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Marmy and Ms. Blind. A resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to advertise for bids and enter into contracts subject to the preparation of funds for various construction projects.
Twenty five dash twenty one will be held until our next meeting, May the fifth, and our last one tonight is twenty five dash twenty two.
Resolution number twenty five dash twenty two by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Rapp and Ms. Blind. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
Twenty five dash twenty two will be held until our next meeting, May fifth. That completes our ordinance and resolutions tonight. Next up is your second opportunity, assistant comments. Do we have anybody tonight?
Shelby and Smith, two thirty seven by the court. I wanted to thank Mr. Marmy for making the bond issues a lot more clear. That really helped. And I wanted to thank him as well, Mr. Hauser, for his students. And I hope in the future, also, I would hope that the city pays as much attention on the people that are suffering during this time period who have lost their homes and jobs and things like that. Also, I'm thrilled that Reverend Noble, a man I respected, has had a street named after him. He did a lot in this community and so does his wife. And I hope that you have asked, given the courtesy of asking his family what he would, what they would prefer in terms of naming the street. Thank you.
Thanks, guys, gals. You did an excellent job. Thanks to the best. Mark, they named our church the other night. Had a great time in concert. Our pastor mentioned their name and their presence. Our church is one that does.
Amen address.
I'm sorry. I am Gary Babcock and I live in the corner of Philmont there. Thank you. Where was I? Okay, on the cleanup, our church is one. You're going to see us out now or they out. They're the ones that go right through each church. I love my center and I don't know why. Our church is in the east, but they love Newark. But that's good. We mentioned it at a council meeting and I proposed it and they went with it. And Ms. Blind has been out there with us. She had a pretty good time. Ms. Blind again. I got some friends, a couple, three that on Summit Street. And they were just, her name came up in conversation and they were just praising her of what she's done along the river and down the second street. Of course, it's closed. I haven't got to check out and make sure they were telling me the true whole truth. That's about true, but I'm sure it is an excellent job. Route sixteen east cleanup. It must be happening because I'm starting to see daylight there. But I was told something about the railroad tracks. Okay, another positive note, we do have warmer weather, but warmer weather comes off-road vehicles traveling our streets. Firstly, I've got, in our neighborhood and the city of Newark is losing a lot of income by not pulling these people over. The other night is the worst one I've ever seen. These little electric scooters. There's a young girl riding on it. I guess it would be twelve, fourteen years old, but there was a child in front of it. One of them little electric scooters, no helmets, no nothing, holding on to the bar. And I personally wrecked one of them and I've had two operations on my leg and ankle. So I know what can happen on these electric scooters that run twelve, fourteen miles an hour. So the city could have a really good income if they were to impound those and start issuing tickets. Every kind of off-road vehicle you can imagine ends up down there at the BP station on East Main Street. That's where they go and give gas. So city wants to make some money and there's an easy way of doing it on impound fees and parking tickets. No, they're not. Yeah, they park at the BP station.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Mr. President and Councilman, my name is Michael and I'd like to first of all say thank you. On behalf of our family for resolution twenty five fourteen and recognition of my father's contribution to nearly the part of the street as a testimony to his life model. And he always said that he wanted to leave the community better than he found it after forty-three years. I think he did and this marker, I think is a recognition. So on behalf of our personal family as well as our church family and child and our constituents, we say thank you for the recognition. It's an honor. Thank you.
Evening, Stephen Smith, two thirty seven by the court. I just wanted to express my appreciation for your comments for how recognized and honest and fairness. It's a very difficult to understand, very much misunderstood situation. It takes a lot of people to varying degrees, some severely, some not so severe. There's a saying I've heard among the larger community, once you've seen one person with autism, you've seen one person with autism. Thank you very much for that recognition.
Anybody else? City officials? Law director? Mr. Mayor?
Number one, I want to thank everyone for coming and certainly your father was quite an icon of the community and we're very honored to be able to name and trade after him. I, at times I miss him, you too, and I know obviously went before me, but I just mean it's, what a wonderful person he was. The many years before I was mayor didn't know him and I would just say it then day, that's probably one thing I regret a little bit. Yeah, it's well-earned and well-do, so we're better, better community because of your family. Today, I'm also going to give kudos out to our water department and particularly our water plant up on Waterworks Road, which I don't want everybody to forget includes water distribution on the east side too, because they take their little system. The Ohio EPA awarded a hundred and sixteen Ohio drinking water systems, two point seven billion dollars. We got thirty nine thousand dollars. We've gotten about a hundred and nine thousand dollars off the Ohio EPA for other things recently, but in this particular thing, there'll be detectors put in the streams upstream from our intake just to see if there's any imbalance in the water. It gives us a little more advanced notice. Why I'm saying all this for this entire program, the Ohio EPA wanted to come in and launch this in Newark this morning. And so they were on site at the plant and Channel Ten was there. So if it's kind of neat, I want to, it was good for the employees at the water plant because they do such a great job, Sean and that whole team up there. And they applied for the grant and it was pretty neat and they got kind of hot behind. Uh, and they got kind of behind the scenes tour a little bit, not only the Ohio EPA, but Channel Ten and the reporting project in Denison was there. So you might look at the Channel Ten website, and it was, it was kind of a neat time and very good. They do a phenomenal job. I jumped at them a little bit, that they probably shined the floors. Well, no, they're always that way. That place is spotless, and we take a lot of pride in our water systems. They do such a wonderful job. I use my line. I always do it. You just turn that spec at on, and it comes out. It seems easy. That takes a lot of work, a lot of due diligence, and our employees do that and have a lot of pride in what they do. So kudos to them, and we were honored and kind of proud that we were in the news today. With that, I pass. Thank you.
Mr. Barker? Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say thank you to Buster Prince and Greg Vickers and our street department team. They handled a massive crater, I would call it, Bryn Mawr Drive in the fifth ward that uh, I'm sure somebody probably lost tire in, because I almost did. Um, so very thankful that they were able to get that actually repaired so quickly, so there were no other incidents. Uh, as well as I want to thank Director Rhodes. The corner of Bryn Mawr and Swanswick has been a bit of a city-owned property. It's been somewhat of a safety issue with trees and things falling down uh, and obstructing the right of way. And so that was taken care of this past week, and we've already seen a major improvement in slower speeds, because people can actually see other people waiting to come out of the parking lot near the state car, the Newark schools, preschool building, even the Energy Cooperative and other residences there. And with that, I will pass. Thank you, Ms. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I was sharing with Reverend Noble some stories from the past. With Shiloh and with Reverend Dr. Noble, it wasn't you or I. It was we. And if there was a need in the community, you know, how can we help? And they filled some very important needs at the time that the group of kids that I was program that I was facilitating, I'll never forget it. And there were no questions asked, no money required. And it was just a huge blessing to that group of kids and the whole sign. And just, just incredible. And that's just the way it was. And I just appreciate them. And on ATVs, sir, it is a constant resource dig. And I'm speaking to people on the state level, even as early as last week again, because I want to be in alignment with them and the legislation that's coming down from the state, because you know, we have to be in alignment with them somewhat. And so as far as I want to thank Buster as well and property maintenance for responding so well and so quickly. You know, we can do a lot of things, but we can't fill potholes. And as well as MPD, they've been very, very long spot in the past couple of weeks for certainly. And coming up, this calendar is very busy with this, ABC already spoke to this weekend's car show, the third. Um, again, is the Raccoon Creek River Roundup? It's a ball. Yeah, Vindaline, please come. And then on the tenth, we are joining CLC folks around the community. That's Christian Life Center for a community roundup. I think we're painting, actually. And then on the seventeenth is the South Newark roundup. And I know we are moving west away from the North Street. I'm not quite sure to what area we're going, but I do know we'll probably be going down probably near South Williams and that area over there, but it's gonna be great. So looking forward to seeing everybody on those dates if you have opportunity. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Mr. Shue.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just echo Mayor's comments, and thank Mr. Reverend Noble for being here this evening. It's always good to see you, and it's truly an honor, your dad and, and your entire family's legacy of ministry and service to our community. So thank you for being here. Thank you for bringing your bodyguard, Mr. Hunt. Maybe we can name Eastern Avenue after Mr. Hunt.
Michael, I can't stand up. I'm glad to see you. It just seems like forever, and we all appreciate you being here to recognize your dad. He was so special. And thanks to Mr. Hunt.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Mr. Alder?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just say the same that everyone else has said. Thank you so much for knowing what you've done. You not have the privilege of knowing your father, but I can certainly rely on the testimony of everybody here and see what he's done. So I sort of appreciate that. But I'll ask.
Thank you. Still a business?
Thank you, Mr. President. Shelby, good luck this weekend with the car show. Hope it goes well. Uh, I want to thank the Streets Department for help with the shoe, should be wrapped up here in the next couple of months. Reverend Noble, thank you so much for being here. Uh, it's, it's an honor. It's an honor to your father, and his, I believe his life mission was to make New York better. Mission accomplished. And I know that you and your family are continuing on his legacy through what you're doing at your church as well. So thank you so much for that. Uh, and lastly, thank you to CLC for the input. As Mr. Babcock mentioned, I was at the worship concert Friday night. It was fantastic. Did a great job. Had a great time and acting in, but without all that. Amy, Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to call a Finance Committee meeting for May the fifth. Want to start out, Reverend Noble appreciates, well-deserved. And what is fantastic is what he has started is continuing. So that's the greatest part of it. And, and he is, is well-deserved as far as the naming. Uh, but what has happened and transpired is just phenomenal for our community, and I want to thank you very much for that. Next, I just want to talk about some things in my ward. Oh, wait, the mayor already did. The water in my ward. And so isn't that fantastic? So the other thing I am going to mention about my ward is, you know, the community was kind of in shock when it was announced the country club was going to have to close and, and move away and just basically no longer have a home. Um, fortunately, they found a home out at the trout club. And I'm here to say that it is thriving. And that the folks are just decided to go out there are just ecstatic about the environment and just what is happening and what's transpiring. The golf course isn't where they, everybody wants it yet, but they see progress. And they're, they're going to be patient about it. So what we thought was going to be devastating to the community, um, this community again responded, and they're gonna make lemonade out of lemons. And so I really did do like that. And finally, I'd be remiss if I did not mention uh, the passing of Pope Francis. Um, as a testament that he had pneumonia, has had it for a while, has been battling it, but it still showed up for Easter services yesterday and made sure that he made a presence. And that's just the type of man he was. And he always made a presence as far as what he did, what he said, how he just led the church. So, um, it is, it is a sad day. And condolences to everybody in the Catholic community. And it is something that is felt around the world. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Mr. Neely?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to congratulate Reverend Noble and your family. It's a great honor. Um, I did not know your father. I haven't actually met you yet. However, I hear, to have become involved in, in the community, I hear the noble name through all the events I go through. So congratulations to your, your family. I would also like to thank the Newark Police Department. I had the misfortune of and the great opportunity to deal with two of your great officers this week, one in a motor vehicle accident involving my daughter, and second, when a clearly intoxicated driver decided to drive through my yard and launch my trash can fifty feet, kind of pole, uh, in both instances, Newark, Newark Police Office Garage. Swiftly, we're very professional and friendly, and that's, that is what our police department is. So very proud of them, thankful we have in our community. So with that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Mr. Raff?
Thank you. First, I want to thank the public for coming and leaving the Pledge of Allegiance from my place to be. Uh, he also had his mother, father, and grandmother here with him. Um, the one thing I will say, it is a great school. They have one major fundraiser every year. The fundraiser is coming up. You guys would like to participate? We have a golf bounty. It's my place to be. Know the website there. They'll accept foursomes, or if somebody wants to sponsor, somebody who's a business owner wants to sponsor, we would love to absolutely have you. Reverend Noble, it's great to see you here. Good to see you following, following in the brother's footsteps. Although I'm sure they're very large, but still. I would say thank you to our safety forces. I had a security issue a couple of weeks ago here at council. Uh, the research and investigation that our detectives did and the information that they came up with is absolutely phenomenal. Very, very, feel very secure with them at the job, along with our law director, Moore. Appreciate everything that you guys do and are doing. Uh, one thing, God bless both for instance. Also prayers for those who are bearing the heavy weight of responsibility for replacing them. The choosing is replaced. For somebody to continue by rally pride to open up the Cherry Valley Bridge along with that closing self, south Chelton. Uh, because that will become a nightmare. It's one block road from West Main to Cherry Valley. Uh, it will absolutely become a cut through. And that's going to be, that's going to cause a safety issue without a doubt. Uh, put down another half a block to Cherry Valley and come around. Makes much more sense. But of all service committee from the fifth, uh, and with somebody else here, Keith Reeball, right? That'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff.
Mr. Ryan? Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, Mr. Noble, thank you and your family, your father. I did not know you and your father. Uh, but I'm honored to vote to change the road to honor your father for generations to come. So, um, I'm young. Me and my father are, you know, this year. And, um, yeah, we're very appreciative of what you and your father, family has done, um, and are very, so thank you. So pass.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. I want to thank everybody for supporting the name change. Um, I knew Reverend Noble, and he was yeah, everybody's already said everything about him, so there's not much more I can add to it, but thank you, Michael, and thank you for being here and supporting us and so our next meeting is May the fifth already in May. Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Cost, second by Mr. Swanswick. Call our parents, say aye.
Aye.